And for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the August 4th County Commission Meeting. I'd remind you to silence your cellphones. The meeting documents are on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And Robert has listening devices for you in the front row if you need that. And with that, we'll go on with routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Excuse me. Excuse me. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings, minute meetings, county commission meetings and the joint county city meeting minutes from 7/28/2015. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
A motion and a second, any changes? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $537,611.25. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any comments? No comments, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, there are none. Item number five is personnel. Item A is consider a motion to approve the routine personnel actions. There are a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve routine actions, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number B is recognize significant employee anniversaries for August.
Good morning, Carrie Deaver from Human Resources. I have a small but impressive list for you today. We have two individuals celebrating five years of service, Cynthia Jupson, who's the commission recorder in the auditor's office, and Carol Muller, who is your newly appointed commission administrative officer, and both are here today. Any comments? Okay. Such an opportunity passed up.
We're still thinking about that one.
And then we have two individuals from the JDC celebrating 15 years of service, Rob Knudsen and Nathan Croce, and Preston Evans, who's a sergeant in the sheriff's office, is celebrating 25 years of service.
All right. And the next one is item C, recognize volunteers in county departments for July 2015.
Another large list, almost 300. We're at 269 individuals volunteering in over nine departments within county.
Okay. And we do want to recognize those people, our employees, who sit up here at the desk with us or sit in our audience with us or are working about, and our volunteers, that it does make the county run smoothly and appreciate the dedication that you have to this county, so. Okay. Item number D is special commission action to approve the compensation adjustments to address marketing issues.
You know that for the past month or so, we've been discussing some market issues related to the pay for our attorneys. Had several discussions in budget, and what we're noticing is that our base wages are lagging market. And when I say noticing, it's something that was brought up last year during our compensation study. The sheriffs have continued to look at it, we're seeing that our numbers and the disparity between market and our wages are widening. We were 29% below market for private industries last year, and we know we're not going to compete with that. But what's surprising to us is where we were at 6% below, maybe in the government, some of our closest government comparisons, local areas, we're now lagging market by over 9%. We're noticing that that is having an impact on us, and for that reason, we're asking your consideration to take certain steps to address these market issues. You might remember, right now, we have authority to go ahead and advertise a higher range if we have market issues like we have in this case. If we use that range, it's not going to be adequate, in our opinion, to address the problem. Plus, if we actually utilize that when hiring, it's not going to be practical because we'll be hiring new staff above what we're paying current, more experienced staff. So we're recommending two steps to take place immediately with your support. That is to utilize a new base salary of $59,508. That is the fifth step in the plan, which is 21.6 as opposed to 21.5. And that is close to that average wage that we're seeing that market bears. In addition, we'd recommend utilizing the same four-step hiring range that we do right now when we advertise from step two to five, and in this case, advertise from 21.6 to 21.9. In addition, because of the problems that we would have actually utilizing those salaries for new staff, we're recommending a modest increase for some select attorney positions. And the reason we're doing that again is to ensure that nobody who's newly hired with less experience is paid more than a current employee with more experience. You need to be aware that even if you do approve these adjustments, you're going to have what we consider to be compression issues. In other words, you're going to have a large portion of employees paid at the base, new base, for those attorney positions. And when you promote some of those entry-level attorneys and they're ready to take on the felony load, you're going to have staff with several years difference in experience all earning the same rate of pay. I think even though that's the case, it's a nice approach, considering your fiscal constraints and making sure that we address the market issues that we have. We're going to recommend some select changes in step dates in order to ensure that more senior, more experienced staff are eligible for increases before less experienced staff. But it's going to be compressed within probably a year. So with that, the adjustments that we'd be recommending is the new base, it's a $59,508. Again, we would recommend a one-step adjustment for any of the attorneys just at pay grade 21 or 2, or 22, who are not at the maximum. That one-step adjustment, you'll still have compression, but it'll help alleviate the compression and it'll address the market issues. I should say here, too, we're focusing on base salary because that's where we're having difficulties in recruiting. But you have market issues with your attorney pay from base to maximum, so that'll help address some of that. If any of these individuals, the most anybody would receive under this plan is a 10% increase. That would be our newly hired people who are currently at $53,000. If we move them to the new base of $59,500, they'd be receiving a 10% adjustment. Recommend resetting the step for those people to August 15th, which is our recommended implementation date. And again, the reason we would do that is to avoid leapfrogging. In addition, we have a few select individuals who, because of how their steps fall, we would need to adjust slightly, so we're recommending your approval for that. And I've listed on the attached document for you those few select staff that we're recommending re-step, or setting steps for that reason. The one adjustment that we have, or I'm recommending to you, that's outside the pay grade 21 and 22, is for Julie Hofer, who's our current public advocate. If her staff received the one-step adjustment, this is one case where we would have the supervisor or department head earning the same rate of pay as a staff member that she supervises. Again, we're suggesting a conservative approach by just a one-step or a 2.5% increase for Julie. You have about 54 attorneys working for you on staff right now. Again, this does not impact anybody, it's just people at pay grade 21 and 22 and Julie Hofer, so it would impact about 44 people. You might recall that during budget discussions, we just looked at this and the impact for 2016, it is currently in your 2016 budget. If you wanted to approve the recommendations today to have them be effective, you'd be looking at an additional cost for 2015 of about $42,640. I've met with all three department heads to discuss the compression issues and the cost. All three are committed to trying to go ahead and recoup that through salary savings, and since all three departments have had turnover, there's some ability to go ahead and do that. But I can't promise you they'd be able to recoup the whole thing. So I want you to be aware that if you do approve this, you might have a request for or supplement at the end of the year, particularly from the state's attorney's office. They've had three senior staff people retire during the last year, so that might be one area where we'll have some difficulties doing it. But all three department heads are committed to trying.
Are there any questions for Carrie? Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
There's a motion and a second, any other comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is applications for abatements, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item A is South Dakota Transportation Commission Notice of Hearing to Review and Adopt Administrative Rules for the County Highway and the Bridge Improvement Plan and the Bridge Improvement Grant, the BIG Fund, at 9:00 a.m., August 27th, at the Becker Hansen Building Commission Room, 700 East Broadway Avenue, Pierce, South Dakota. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices. And this is a first reading and authorize the auditude to publish notice of a hearing on August 18th. Kevin, you want to finish out the legal description? Or do you want me to do it? I'll just finish what we're doing here. A hearing on August 18th, 2015, to consider rezoning number 15-05 from the A1 Agricultural District to the C Commercial District, legal, property legal description as tract 3, except H1 and except south 260 feet of the west 300 feet of the Krell Addition, southeast one quarter, southeast one quarter, section 35, township 101 North, range 51 West Wall Lake Township.
All right. Yes, this is the Kevin Hookman, County Planning and Zoning. This is a rezoning application that needs to be scheduled for a hearing date. The rezoning request is for this property that was described, is located approximately three miles west of Sioux Falls and adjacent to the south side of Wild Water West Amusement Park. The petitioners would like to, are requesting to rezone approximately 18 acres of this 20.11 acres parcel. The remaining portion of this will remain agricultural in order to re-keep a building eligibility on the site. And the 18 acres would be rezoned to commercial. The hearing date is scheduled to be heard on August 18th of 2015, and that's what we'd like to publish in the paper for a hearing date.
So this is just an authorization for the auditor to publish notice of hearing? Is there a?
Make a motion to authorize publication.
Second.
A motion and a second, any questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Commissioner Barth.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is DPNO 51769, in the amount of $1,132. We've received this request from a party who would like to dismiss this from her now ex-husband and keep it on her own, on her own to-do list. She says that they got some rental assistance in 2009, and her husband is scheduled, ex-husband is scheduled to close on a home later this month, and, you know, it's a home where he will live with their children. And the amounts involved, again, for rent, were posted after their divorce was final. And at that point, then, our options of collecting from him become less. And I guess I'm going to favor this and make a motion to accept taking him off of this lien and leaving it in full against the applicant.
I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. I believe the issue with this is that the money was taken specifically for her, and it was after the divorce was final, so he shouldn't have been on it in the first place.
And again, he is getting a house to live with their children.
State's attorney.
If I may add, too, one of the issues with this, too, is that the lien was actually recorded in our office after the final date of the divorce, too, which is something I think you should consider, too, as to the enforcement. But I would also concur in the recommendation to accept this proposal.
From the applicant. I have a motion and a second to agree the proposal or the application of DPNO number 51769 to compromise $1,139 and leave the lien entirely upon the ex-wife. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Next one is opportunity for public comment. If there's anyone who would like to speak to the commission about anything that's not on the agenda. Okay. See none, we'll go on to regular business. Item number 10 is a public hearing to consider a motion to declare property legally described as north 114th West 73rd Peterson Tract, south southwest, second southwest, one quarter southwest, one quarter 17, 10350 Lyons Township as a public nuisance and enact South Dakota Codified Law 20-10-6. Kevin Hookman.
Kevin Hookman, County Planning and Zoning. As you heard, this property is a request to, for a public nuisance declaration, and the property legally described as the north 114 feet of the west 73 feet Peterson's Tract to number two, southwest quarter of the southwest quarter of 17, 10350 Lyons Township. On March 24th of this year, staff received a complaint and was brought to aware of this property that a fire has burned, and that there is numerous unlicensed vehicles and barrels and other debris involved in this property. Staff inspected the property on the next day, March 25th, and found that the complaint to be true, that the fire was there and there's debris. After the staff inspected, letters were sent. First letter was sent, and there's no reply, and no cleanup was done. A second letter was sent, and there was a reply from the property owner, to which we discussed what needed to be cleaned up and the possibility of looking at a timeline. And after that phone call was made, no other contact was made by the property owner to planning staff. Then the final letter was sent, and no reply was, heard from that either. Final letter was sent on June 12th of this year, and no reply was heard and no cleanup was done. So staff sent a notice of hearing for today's meeting on July 21st of this year, for today's date. And it was sent certified mail, a return receipt, and we have not received the return receipt for the mail yet. Just to go over some photos of the property, this is what was inspected on March 25th, and you can see on the left of the screen that there's a dot of where I am looking at on the property and where it's going to, where it's, the photo's looking. You can see the burned-out buildings and the barrels that are scattered in the lawn. The fire was big enough to melt portions of the first three vehicles there, as you can Some more pictures from that first inspection. And it burned up more or less all the unmowed portion of the grass, is what it appeared to be, and where the fire stopped. All the vehicles that are on the property have either no license plates, or they are expired tags. This one is red, but it is a red tag from 2011. Other debris that was there before the fire, not just the fire debris, this is close to the existing building there. This would be the next inspection on April 15th. Some of the barrels were consolidated, but little else has changed. And then, May 28th, and you can see the grass is starting to grow up in the, in between the vehicles. But other than that, little else has changed. The barrels are still there, the vehicles are still there. And then, July 10th. And this was after the final letter was sent. And at this point, there's been weeds, this is a Canadian thistle that was there, it was very tall, other weeds. The Minnehaw County's Public Nuisance Ordinance states that any, that abandoned property is a public nuisance, which is any deteriorated, wrecked, dismantled, direlect, or inoperable property in unusable condition in its present state, and which has been left outside of an enclosed permanent structure. Without being so restricted, this shall include deteriorated, wrecked, inoperative, dismantled or partially dismantled or unlicensed motor vehicles, dilapidated or unregistered mobile homes, trailers, boats, machinery, refrigerators, washing machines, or other appliances, plumbing fixtures, furniture, automotive parts, waste building materials, junk, and any other similar articles in such conditions. South Dakota Codified Law allows the county to declare a public nuisance to allow the county to clean up the property and defray the costs to the public, the property owner. So the staff's request is that Minnehaw County declare this property as a public nuisance. And if you have any questions, I can take them, yeah.
Let's, this is a public hearing, so let's see, is there any proponent? Is there any opponent? Okay. So then, if there's questions for Kevin, Commissioner Barth?
What was the nature of the one contact that the department did have with the property owner?
So the property owner called the office, and when I talked to her, it was Tamara. And when I talked to her, she was really wondering what was, needed to be done. And I discussed that the commercial vehicles needed to be, that there cannot be any commercial vehicles, so that, because it's an agriculturally zoned property. And the vehicles needed to be either licensed or removed. And then that the debris from the fire needed to be removed. It was recognized that after a fire like this, that it can be difficult to get things cleaned up right away. But as you can see, nothing has happened for quite some time now. So, and I, when I talked to her, we, I said, well, we can talk, because she was wanting to talk to her husband about the timeline of when things can be cleaned up. And I said, well, if you make a proposal, we can work with that. And nothing came forward from that, so.
Commissioner Barth.
So while you were out there looking at things, do you have any idea what was in those steel drums? Was it, was there liquids, unknown chemicals, toxic waste, gas, oil?
So yesterday, I did visit the site one last time to make sure that nothing's changed since the last letter. And I tapped on a few of the barrels. It appears to me that most of them are empty, actually. The one, I couldn't undo any of the lids without any tools, pry open them. But the ones that are open have dirty water, and it looks like there may be oil in it, would be my guess.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kelly?
I've got four questions here, if you don't mind. When did the fire occur?
The fire, oh, that was announced in the initial email. It was like the 23rd of March, it was very shortly before the complaint.
Of this year?
No, last year.
And? Of this spring, yep.
Do you got?
Are the weeds, are the weeds an issue of the condition? I mean, if they move all that stuff and leave the weeds, it looked like there was a nice house next door and?
That is another portion of the public nuisance, is vegetation in a residential area, although this is agriculturally zoned and is clearly in the residential area or subdivision, the grass and weeds have to be mowed to a minimum, maximum of 12 inches high.
Okay. I noticed in one of the July 10th pictures, that looks to me like a thistle.
Yes.
And are they, they're supposed to be removed, are they not?
Yes.
And then one other question, the autos, what, if we go in and clean it up, what do we do, impound the autos, or?
Is, from what I, my understanding is we remove the automobiles, and they go to a dump or a salvage yard from there.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? You didn't receive a return receipt, so that means they did receive the letter?
No, the, since I have not received the return receipt, that means that they have not received a letter, or they have not acknowledged the letter, no.
Okay. Are they current on their property taxes on this piece of parcel at this point? Do we know that?
That I don't know.
That might be something interesting to know, if they're just letting the property go anyway. And what exactly will we clean up? We'll move the vehicles, all the burned debris, the barrels, and mow the property. And there's a building on that property, and so that building will stay.
Yep, the building and everything, and it would stay.
And then all those costs would be assessed on their property taxes. Might be interesting to know, though, if they are paying property taxes at this point. Any other questions? I guess when I read this, Kevin, I was thinking it had been a year ago, but it's only been about six months.
Yep.
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth.
You know, really, we have to wake up this property owner and have this thing taken care of. So I'm going to make a motion to declare this property a nuisance.
You're going to make a motion to what?
To declare this property a nuisance and to move forward. That said, I would hope that we would continue efforts to contact and speak with the property owner, but they cannot delay forever taking action.
I'll start with that motion.
I have a motion and a second to declare a, a public nuisance to enact cleanup. Kevin, I'm wondering how long before the cleanup would happen? Obviously, we would contact them again, that this had been declared at public notice. They probably have, if they're really speedy, a week or two to get it cleaned up. How long do you think before we would be ready to clean up?
That would depend on the contractor. In previous cases, I looked up, and we've used rung-y demolition for cases like this. And if they're really busy, it might be a little while before they can get to this site, and they'd have more time to just really speedily clean it up. Or if they were not so busy, they might be able to be there in a couple of weeks, yeah.
And the vehicles that are on the property would be sold for scrap metal or whatever? Those funds would go towards paying for the expenses of the property cleanup?
I gathered that that goes basically to paying the person who removes the vehicles.
So the expense of, the expense of the cleanup. Are there any other questions? I have a motion and a second to declare a public nuisance and, what do you think? Taxes are current? Oh, taxes are current, okay, thank you. So I have a motion and a second, are there any other questions? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kevin.
Madam Chair, just a little comment that, you know, if they were to be in touch with us on this and start a timetable to clean things up, you know, it doesn't have to be adversarial, we can work together to get this done.
Okay. Item number 11 is also a public hearing and second reading of the Minnehaw County Ordinance, MC number 47-15, an ordinance for permitting requirements of utilities crossing highways under Minnehaw County jurisdiction. TJ Boothey. Except for, I think we have Shannon Schultz. Good morning, Shannon.
Good morning, Commissioner. Shannon Schultz, Assistant Highway Superintendent. PJ is attending some family matters Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday this week.
Can you speak up a little, please, Shannon?
So this is the second reading, and item 12 is also closely tied to this. And I guess I just want to briefly read from our guidebook, one introductory paragraph. And I think it's, that's the ethic and intention of what we're trying to do with this, the ordinance. "It is in the public interest for utility facilities to be accommodated on highway right-of-way when such use and occupancy do not adversely affect highway safety, construction, maintenance, and operations. In this respect, guidelines outlining safe and rational practices for accommodating utilities within highway right-of-way are valuable assistance to transportation agencies. The guidelines herein are provided in the interest of developing and preserving safe highway operations in roadways." So that's kind of a very good overview. In practice, we have been doing utility permits in the past, very little teeth in them, lack of county ordinance support, and we've not been charging a fee. So by enacting this ordinance, we would be authorized to charge a fee, very minimal fees for most utilities, for example, service lines for houses, water lines, cables. But it gives us some teeth when something big is happening and, and there's potential long-term issues with maintenance of our roadways, so. The permit is about three pages. The average applicant will fill out approximately a third of that, because it is a comprehensive permit, and it covers everything from overhead to utilities crossing on bridges and as well as underground. So not, not every applicant will, will have a very complicated permit.
Okay. This also is a public hearing, is there anyone who wants to speak in favor of this? Anyone who wants to speak against this? Okay, seeing none, is there any comments or questions for Shannon? Commissioner Barth?
Shannon, what was? Shannon, what, will the fees that we charge be brought before the commission to approve, or have you guys figured that out yet?
The fees are in the permit now, on the form, and it is, I guess, my understanding, or at least my intention, is that you would approve that fee schedule, and if there were a change, it would be a commission approval again.
Additional questions for Shannon? Did you have a comment?
Maybe I can just add to that. What this ordinance does is it basically enacts the requirements of having a permit, gives authority to charge the fees, makes some statements about bonding requirements, and defines a violation to penalties. When taken with the proposed resolution, that's item 12, the resolution is the adoption by you of the guidebook and forms in their current form, and that sets the fee schedule. If you would like to alter those at any point in time, you can just pass another resolution to, to adopt those revisions, if you will. So...
Thanks, Kirsten. Commissioner Benning?
I'm not sure which one of you gets this question, but is, so my understanding that this is really just a codification of an existing practice, or are we making major changes to what we've done in the past?
A little bit of both. It is a formal adoption of a permitting process. We have had a very simple, one-page utility permit before that charged no fee, and frankly, had very little requirements in terms of standardization of backfill and seeding and things like that. It also gives us the right to request additional information. For example, if a water line were to cross a bridge, we would want a structural analysis to say that that water line will not impair, impede, restrict the use of that bridge, compromise its design, carrying capacity, et cetera. So, with, following that example, it would say, you, the permitee, will have to provide us a structural engineering stamp of approval that it will not impair our bridge, or it gives us the right to hire our own engineer and charge those fees for that structural analysis back to the permitee. That's just one example of what this permit will do.
Okay. Kirsten?
And if I may briefly add to our permitting process to this point, I would argue that the broad authority delegated to the superintendent with supervision over our system gives them the authority to do this. However, to remove all debate, to remove all doubt, the enactment of the ordinance and the companion resolution, I think, makes that absolutely crystal clear. So, it's basically shoring up what we're doing, in my opinion, so...
Additional questions for Shannon? Commissioner Barth?
So, is there a penalty for doing it without the permit?
They would be in violation of the law, so yes, I would assume there is a penalty.
But I put this line in 10 years before you had this ordinance.
That's grandfathered in. We can't, we can't go backwards and retro, require them to, you know, meet our new requirements based on something that was approved in the past, so from here going forward.
You know, some, I think some of these things are easier to slip through, and without any permit, it's, it's done. You know, you bore the, bore the highway, and you'd, you'd never know it, I mean...
Well, that's true. I gotta say that most of our utility companies are not that inclined to be that way. We have good working relationships with most utilities. It's, it is pretty routine, run-of-the-mill to, you know, continue to provide utilities in our right of way, so those practices are pretty well-understood. So, I really, that would be the exception, Mr. Barth, not, not, not standard by any means.
Thanks.
Any additional questions? Is there a motion?
I have a question.
Commissioner Bennigan?
When you say "most utilities," and then you talk about, do we have any exceptions? Have we had hassles in the past with utility-related issues?
I personally don't know of any in my three-year tenure with the county. I do know of some funky business with water, or excuse me, drain tile. People do that on, kind of on their own, and we may or may not hear about that, but then when we go and do a covert inspection, it's not right. So, things like that happen, but again, not that I'm aware of, that I've personally been, you know, happened in the last three years since I've been on board.
This is a public hearing, and we do have someone who'd like to speak. Would you like to speak for or against? You have to identify yourself and give your position.
I'm Al Miran, 25935, 469th Avenue, Sioux Falls. And we do some tile work, and occasionally cross the county highways with permission, I might add. But I'm wondering a little bit about the fee schedule, first of all, so that we have some idea what this might contribute to our cost.
It'll be in the next, it'll be in the next item on the agenda? Though discussing the next item, yeah.
Right, but I mean, but before you act on this, I think it would be good to have some idea of what that fee schedule is, so that we have some idea of the cost. I have really no objection, I'm not speaking for or against this, this item, but wondering really about the, about the fee structure. And certainly, I think that anybody doing this should have permission and should not impact the county and the county highways. I think in some instances, in where we have worked, it actually has helped the county highway, because it allows the water to pass through a drainage tile rather than through the culverts, that sort of thing. So, just have a couple of questions concerning that.
All right. Thank you.
Could we, I mean, it's in the thing, it's in the white one there, but...
Kirsten has a comment.
I'll just, I'll just read them to you. It's on page three of item 12 that you'll be looking at next, but the type of crossing that I, I believe was just referenced would be, since it crosses, if it's a crossing one, it would be $50. And frankly, for staff time to do the review, and maybe go out to the site and do a site visit, I think it's safe saying that this is not a moneymaker for the county, but simply a partial recouping of staff effort and time.
Okay. Mr. Miran?
You know, that, that does sound reasonable to me. I'm just wondering what the demands might be then with respect to engineering and, and that possible added cost, if that's, if that's a requirement. Because a simple crossing, I don't think should require engineering, and I'm wondering if that's an option based on how the, the county highway people would view that, or what, if that's a standard requirement in all cases.
Shannon, you want to answer that question, please?
Standard crossings such as a utility line, or even a service line that are horizontally bored, very common, very good people out in the field that do this regularly, no engineering is required, and frankly, it's a very low impact to our system.
Okay. Thank you. Any additional questions from the commission? I would look for a motion.
I'll make a motion to, to approve it, the ordinance.
A second.
A motion and a second to approve the ordinance for permitting requirements for utilities crossing highways under Minnehaha County jurisdiction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider a resolution to adopt the promulgation of criteria, rules, and forms for permitting utility crossing highways under Minnehaha County jurisdiction. Shannon Schultz. This is, this is where we have the fees and stuff.
Correct. This is the continuation or the implementation of having an operating permit. The fee schedule is on the permit form on the bottom of page two.
Bottom of page two.
And again, the majority of these are going to be the simple, very inexpensive, much like Mr. Kathlemeyer mentioned, is it's kind of a cost of paperwork and some staff time to go out and do some reviews. In addition to that, it does, as, as the complexity and the size of the systems get larger, the impact on our staff and inspection time goes up, and some of those costs are reflected in the permit fee schedule. You will also note that any time there's a hazardous utility that has a, a crossing, you know, those fees are, are kind of steep. If you look at it as a one-time cost, it is steep, but if you look at it in terms of how often, we will have to go back and repair that, you know, oftentimes you'll see a sign that says "pipe in road." Well, after 10 years, the sign might as well say "dip in road," because the pipe forms that dip, and then we have a maintenance issue. So, long-term, that, that, those fees for, for repairing those is, is really a small percentage of what we'll actually spend a lifetime of our payment, but it's kind of a deterrent to, you know, find another way. And if this is the only way, then, okay, we have a way to deal with it.
Just pertaining to county highways?
County highways only. Anything else, state, primary, townships? No, they have their own permits, yep.
Shannon, what page is it on? Because page two is not on, page two for me...
Page two of the permit form itself. I guess I don't have a copy of what's on your iPads there, so it would be after all, Kirsten's language.
Okay, I found it. It comes up on our iPads as 3/107.
Yeah, we use that in a different file.
Yep, we just have a different search. There, that's where it is, the fee schedule.
Same document, though.
Any other questions on this?
Madam Chair?
Commissioner Barth?
So, you know, should a oil pipeline be routed through Minnehaha County? You know, what would be our fee and stuff on that? That clearly would be an open trench. It would be, we'd have to restore the roadway after, or they would. That's likely going to be of a different consistency. Talked about a dip, it'd probably be...
Well, frankly, the impetus of this permit is driving from that kind of situation. A small correction, most of their permit, or most of their, their pipes are going to be horizontally bored, so they're going to have bore pits in a right-of-way and, and not do an open trench. So, that's good. The bad is that, that those oils are, are hot, and they cause the differential in temperature. And so you've got a soft road embankment underneath otherwise frozen and frosted embedments, so that's going to be continual maintenance for a long, long time. So, the fee for that exact one issue would be $250 as an occupancy, plus an additional $1,500 every time they cross our road. So, I think the Dakota Access Pipeline has an intention of eight crossings, so there would be that times eight.
Okay. Any additional questions?
Just one more comment. Going back to tiling, when we had our tiling task force, it was commented that most people tile in the fog or on Christmas Day, and so hopefully, we get those permits, but we'll see.
Is there a motion?
There is a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and a second to approve the resolution to adopt the criteria, rules, and forms permitting utilities crossing the highways and under the county, under Minnehaha County jurisdiction. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Shannon. Item number 13 is authorize the chairman to sign the 2015 state and local agreement addendum between Minnehaha County and the South Dakota Department of Emergency Management.
Good morning, Commissioners, and Young Emergency Management. In front of you is the addendum for the state and local agreement grant that I work with. Every year, and typically, you'll see this in the middle of September, I get a work contract with the state of South Dakota for the work with that we do in preparedness, response mitigation, and other emergency management efforts. Sometime later on in the year, and it's typically about this time, we actually get the funding amount from them for the work that we've done. So, that's why you'll see, this is the addendum, or early in the next couple of months, you'll see an actual agreement for next year. This year's amount is $227,362, which will provide for a 50% match for up to, or for salary and administrative expenses within our office. It also does allow for other special projects, because that amount of 227 is greater than our current salary and administrative expenses. So, I'll be putting, I guess, together a list of projects that we can use for the remainder of the amount. This year on our project list already is, would be a second payment, or to submit the second payment for the GIS project for the new pectometry, and then also to reimburse the county highway department for a reader board that they purchased earlier, and both of those items we use, or can use during events out in the county, if needed. So, I'm asking the commission to authorize the auditor, the chairperson, and myself to enter into the agreement with the state of South Dakota.
Any questions for Lynn? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? A motion and a second to authorize the signing between the state and Minnehaha County. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. The next one is to authorize the chairman to sign the joint powers agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks for the use of one motor, or boat, motor, trailer, and specialized equipment for public safety emergencies and search and rescue efforts in the Minnehaha County and adjacent counties.
Commissioners, Minnehaha County's worked with the Game Fish and Parks for 15-plus years. As part of our partnership, they, Minnehaha County and, and the Game Fish and Parks purchased some equipment together. That equipment is used by our volunteers, started the Emergency Management Office for those uses, as indicated within the memo. Attached is a joint powers agreement that outlines what we do, what they do, for those, and they're just asking for the agreement to be re-signed. It's been signed several times, it's just an updated agreement. Kirsten's been reviewed it and doesn't seem to have any questions, so I'd be willing to answer any questions, and then request that the commission authorize the appropriate signatures for the agreement.
Okay. Is there any questions for Lynn? Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second.
Motion and a second to sign the joint powers of agreement between Minnehaha County and South Dakota Department of Game Fish and Parks. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously.
Madam Chair, can I ask Lynn a question here?
Commissioner Barth?
Lynn, the other counties that, that you support, I know you were up at Lake Madison on that recent tragedy. Do these other counties not have the equipment that we have? Is that, or the manpower, is that the issue, or?
Yeah, typically, you know, we generally support in different search and rescue missions, it all depends, but Lincoln County, Turner County, McCook, Lake, and Moody, and then we do go out into further areas, and they just don't have the manpower, the equipment. And, you know, in this recent event, the individual that was a victim there was a resident of Minnehaha County in Sioux Falls, so, you know, with our population base, the way they get out and do some of the things, you know, it's really been the thoughts of the commission that we support them here, but we also support them when they go outside of the area, as long as it's within reason, and it's not following our citizens' turn on a, on a day-to-day basis, or even a month-to-month basis to Rapid City or other areas, so...
Thank you. Thank you. Item number 15 is consider a motion to supplement the $1,726 from the building fund to the building fund budget, ASN 19633, outside repairs representing insurance reimbursement from the State Farm Fire and Casualty Company. Kim Adamson.
Kim Adamson from the auditor's office. This is just a supplement to, for the insurance proceeds from damage to the chain-link fence over in parking lot H.
Okay. We'll discuss that in building fund this morning.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Kim.
Thank you.
Item number 16 is consider a motion to authorize the sales order agreement between Minnehaha County and ES&amp;S Electronic Election Systems and Software for the purchase of one DS850 High-Speed Digital Imaging Scanning Ballot Counter in the amount of $109,387.50, utilizing Help America Vote Act, the HAVA funds administered by the South Dakota State Secretary of State, Bob Litz.
Good morning, Commissioner. Bob Litz from the Elections Department downstairs. Auditor's office, I'd like to purchase a third DS850 ballot tabulation machine this fall. The reason we'd like to purchase it now is we want to perform acceptance testing procedures as well as practice with the machine, and compare the results with our other DS, our other two DS850s that the Elections Department currently has. I've negotiated over $10,000 in savings for the purchase, installation, refresher training, shipping, and handling of the contract. I've also negotiated onsite election support to be present in Minnehaha County for the 2016 open presidential election, which I might add will be, we'll have a school city election April 12, 2016, then we'll have a primary in June 4. Those will come first, but even if, I, I feel safe with those there, but the presidential election, I'd like to have that help on standby. The total price of the contract I'm requesting today will be $109,387.50. It will be repaid by HAVA funds administered by the Secretary of State. That will leave our current HAVA balance at $450,803.50. The action that I'm requesting today is for the commission to approve of, and the chairperson to sign the two copies of the contract attached. Civil State's Attorney's Office has inspected the document, finds no detriment to the county in the purchase.
Is there any questions for Bob? Commissioner Bennigan?
I was just wondering, is there a ratio that people used on how many machines you should have versus the number of votes that are presented?
Well, I'm glad you asked that, because before the last election... Well, I'm glad you asked that because before the last election, we did kind of a numbers thing on how many ballots we thought we would have as opposed to the machines that we would need to do it. And I was assured by a couple of people, one of them from ESNS and another one from Sea Change, that two of them would do the job. But about an hour into the election last time, it became apparent to me that that was not the case.
Do they make other recommendations in reference to the kind of equipment that you have and all that good stuff?
No, I, they really don't. You know, they kind of leave you to make the decisions on your own. And I think that with this third machine, we'll be well-equipped to handle this next election, the next presidential election. I'm figuring probably going to have 90,000-plus ballots, 20,000 of those are probably going to be absentees. And we are also going to count the absentees starting in the morning. We're going to start running those through one of the machines. And actually, if you do that, you're actually conducting two elections throughout today because each of the absentee precincts will be counted as one. And then later on, as you run the other precincts through, when they come in with the ballot boxes, you're going to have to add those totals in there again. So, you know, it just became apparent to me with the way, the sensitivity of these machines last time with that election, that the way they kicked them out, number one, I didn't have enough resolution boards, and number two, I could have used that third machine.
The other magic question is space-related issues for not only the machine, but the board itself?
You know, I, we came up and did an assessment of this room, the room there, and we're going to actually have to close off part of this hallway. And then downstairs, where the ballot tabulation machines are too, we're going to have to close off part of that hallway as well in order to do that. We had, did some rearranging of the way we did things. We brought the ballots in, just the traffic pattern for which things moved, and it seemed to work pretty good. Of course, 15,000 ballots, you know, as opposed to 90,000, well, you know, that's, it's kind of like having a race car where you tune it up in the garage and then you take it out to the track, you know? We're just going to have to find some of these things out. But by buying this third machine, we're going to, we've got some acceptance testing methods that we're going to do before we even pay for the machine to find out, number one, if it's functioning properly. And then, we're also going to do a lot of training on those machines in the off-season with all three of them and compare the results. As far as the space needs go, you know, I, and I talked to Commissioner Hyburger a little bit about this, you know, I'd like to maybe move over everything over to the Coliseum and have the election kind of center thing there. In some respects, it would work very well. In other respects, taking those sensitive machines over there in November might be problematic. I think dropping the ballot boxes off afterwards would be fine. I think that having the people that open the absentee ballots normally that are in this room and where we've made those offices, that could be conducted over there. It'd be nice to have it all in one place. You know, I think there's probably some security concerns over there, but I would add that when I went to go look at that building here a while back, it took me two phone calls and I had to go through two people to get into the place. So, you know, I think the security concerns for the Coliseum could be handled. But, you know, that's an option I'd like to think about a little bit, but we can also do it, I think, just by closing some of this hallway off and getting some signs made that indicate that, you know, egress and ingress is for authorized personnel only, except in the case of fire, because I think we may have some issues there if I don't at least have that type of signage up. And there would be a passageway in between here to get, you know, in and out. Obviously, I've got to get people in and out of there as well. So, there's a lot to think about. You know, like I say, it would be kind of nice to have everything in one roomed over there at the Coliseum, but getting those machines over there, I probably have to get them over there a couple of weeks early, make sure they're acclimated, make sure I've got all the power things set up, make sure I've got all the tables set up and all the chairs set up and everything that we need to conduct an election. It's just a thought. You know, like I say, we've got the space in here. It'll be tight. I struggle with this, you know, I was out in Pennington County, and she's got three full-time workers on elections, but in fairness to her, she does conduct all of the cities, you know, with all of the school district that's within the city district, and she conducts the city elections, everything about it. So, she probably has a little bit of an enterprise fund there to pay those things back. On my recent trip out to Lake Havasu City, Arizona, I went up to Mojave County because that election director coordinator, he's thinking about buying some of these machines and wanted to talk to me about them. And so, I went up there and shared our experiences and things like that, and he was appreciative. And in the process, he also showed me around. And they've dedicated a lot of space to elections out there. Now, you know, we've got, I've got to be realistic about this and understand that our elections happen, you know, occasionally, and if we can just make things work, I think that's good enough. But, you know, the Coliseum idea, I guess, has intrigued me, so.
Additional questions? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, Bob, I think the Coliseum, yeah, it is intriguing. You'd only have to do it during presidential years, probably, because that's your maximum turnout, isn't it?
That is the big one. And this will be an open presidential, which will increase the turnout even more.
I just, yeah, I think you ought to continue to pursue that because to me, that would, tight quarters make for mistakes. And there you could really lay it out as it should be and have everybody where they're supposed to be and...
Well, and as I think about the precincts returning, you know, a lot of times, we'll have them jammed up here in the parking lot, kind of out in Sixth Street, depending on how quickly the Boy Scouts do, but we could certainly have that lane on Main Avenue, you know, put up some no parking signs and just get the cars to come out there. So, it would be the same bottleneck whether it's on Main Avenue or out here. And I noticed the traffic at night out on Main Avenue, it's not very heavy, you know, most nights, so.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Barth.
I plan to support this purchase, and I know, I don't know if it was during the election panel or what, but I think Monty said that if we want to have two functional machines, we should have three, you know, total. And so, I think if we'd had three in this last election, we could have done a lot better. So, I plan to support this, and I'll make a motion to make this purchase if...
I have a motion to authorize the sales order agreement between Minnehaha County and ESNS. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any additional questions or comments? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner. It will arrive here first part of September.
Item number 17 is Minnehaha County Liaison Reports. Are there any reports? Commissioner Kelly?
I believe it's the last week on Tuesday night, they had the public hearing, or was it Wednesday? I don't know what. Anyway, I went to the public hearing after, yeah, it was Tuesday, after our joint hearing, or joint meeting. And I think a good share of the people that are affected by this thing out north on the FEMA designations were there. They had a tendency to blame the city's diversion, what the city did. The experts there continued to say, no, that that had no bearing on it. So, you know, I don't know if anybody left the meeting happy. But anyway, so I called Lynn the next day or two, and he was kind enough to give me a tour of Ditch Road, which I saw areas of this county I have never, ever been in. And this ditch, I really, I knew there was that little strip between Renner and I-90, but boy, I mean, there's a lot of road there. One of the things that Lynn pointed out, and one of the things that seems to be a block in the, at least in the spring flooding, is when the ice jams up at the I-90 bridge. And of course, you know, that would be next to impossible, probably, to ever get the government to replace that bridge with a longer bridge so that they had more space in there. But one question is, nobody seems to know who owns the ditch, and so, nobody's maintaining it, and it is absolutely full of debris, trees down, everything else. And I think it's something maybe should be looked at because there's still 100 people out there that are going to be paying more for their, that they never expected because they've never been in the floodplain. Most of them say they've never been flooded. But, you know, you've got the 1% or 2% flood possibility that FEMA's looking at. So, I would suggest, if you have any questions on it, to get a hold of Lynn because it is an eye-opener. In the meantime, it would be interesting to do some research to find out who's responsible for that ditch.
We did have that as a planning and zoning a couple of years ago about Ditch Road. And does somebody remember? I don't know that I want to say what I remember if I'm wrong.
If I may, what I remember is that this ditch is one of those projects of our drainage district, just like the pipe projects that we've had up by Colton and Humboldt. It was built by a drainage district, which after it was completed, it became defunct. And that was in the 1920s.
It was the responsibility of the people that were bordering that ditch to keep it cleaned out. We talked about this when we had a barn up in that area around Baltic, is when it came up a few years ago. And we did talk about the fact that it is fall and it needs to be cleaned.
Oh, it's terrible.
But I believe it was the property owners in that area were responsible for cleaning out their own ditches.
The same thing happens when the old drains blow out in a field and makes a hole the size of this room. That farmer is stuck with the problem.
Well, I do think we owe it to our constituents up there that are in the county, that are not, you know, the city picked up, I don't know, 1,100, 1,200, whatever it was, properties off of the floodplain, and those insurance premiums can be very significant, as I understand. And I think we've got to continue to take care of those people north of the city limits. And if there's some stuff that should be done that isn't being done either by us or by the drainage district or whatever, I think we should approach it, even if you had to go to, back to the drainage district and back to the property owners, because obviously, it'll benefit them if you get it cleaned out. Or the engineers at least should look at it. I don't know.
Scott, could I ask you to come up just a second? Is that something that planning and zoning could look into and just report back to us? I know at that meeting that we had with the city, they did say that there might be ways to mitigate some of those issues and...
There are mitigation options, and I can look into that. The, as Commissioner Barth indicated, that he's 100% correct, that Drainage District was set up in the 20s, I believe, and they constructed the ditch, a long ditch road, and it is defunct. There is no Drainage District that is operable anymore or even functioning. So, you know, one option would be for those people, all of the people along Ditch Creek, to reform that, all the property owners, and basically take over the maintenance and the upkeep of that ditch, which is, you know, you have to have a wide participation, and that just is hard to come by. There are maybe other mitigations. We had also neighbors from those Swanson tracks that brought in some information at the meeting on Tuesday night at the public open house of the library about a road that is not used on the, underneath the interstate on the west side of the interstate, an agricultural road that potentially could be taken out. And that may open up the channel a little bit of the Big Sioux, but I did talk to Lynn DeYoung about this, I think Wednesday or Thursday. The mitigation projects that are available, they, there's a co-funding, there's a, you know, a share, a cost sharing that has to be done where the county may have to pay 25% of that, and then FEMA or the state emergency management could potentially pay for that based on their ranking system of a project. I wouldn't have no idea what that would cost. I can't imagine it'd be very cheap, and we would have to come up with the 25% match.
Maybe emergency management and planning should at least look and see what some of those solutions are? Thoughts?
Yeah, I think we need to continue to look into it and at least tell those people out there we're doing something, we're looking. Look online. I think I was on the commission, or the council, when we did, started on that drainage, that whole west-side drainage deal. And it took quite 15 years nearly to complete that, so.
I'm not any, under any delusion that you can do this quickly, so could you just talk to Lynn and see what's a timeframe for us and maybe get back to our office about what you think you'd need to just at least look into some ideas?
We can look into it, and I can get, I can get a better idea of the, the exact process of when they take applications for the mitigation projects, the exact amount and how it's ranked. I can prepare that information and get it to you. One of the other things that Commissioner Kelly did point out or that is important, he attended the meeting on Tuesday night. It is important, and we will be sending out, I will, my office will be sending out notices to all of the property owners up there because the takeaway, the most important takeaway of that meeting was, get your insurance now, and you're going to be grandfathered in. And you have to have that insurance in place at least 30 days prior to those maps going into effect. We don't know the exact effective date or when those maps will be officially adopted. They're dated June 26, but it's about another year and a couple of months before they become effective. And my intent is to follow this closely, probably next year about this time, start sending out letters to all the affected property owners and tell them it is important if you want to obtain the cheapest rate for your flood insurance, that you lock it in at least 30 days prior to this date. And that's one of the outreach that we will be doing for those citizens up there because it is 100 people and in that, as Dick Kelly indicated, that insurance is not, cannot, is not cheap.
I have a question for Kirsten. The Drainage District was formed.
Correct.
Was it ever officially unformed?
I think what happened is by operation of them not doing their regular meetings, it was officially disbanded once they failed to hold those required meetings. Where the responsibility lies after that, I think, is an open question.
And to form a Drainage District up there that included all that north, you know, in fact, even the ones that are getting flooded now that perhaps wouldn't with clearing out of Ditch Road, or Ditch, the ditch. Can that happen, or do the residents have to form it?
I'd have to look at that question specifically of whether that can be, can be brought in over your own objections. And I don't know what the boundaries of that prior district were even. I'd have to look at that as well, where the definition ended.
Commissioner Barth.
Thank you. I believe there were 14 Drainage Districts of this nature in the county, and the auditor may still have some record on it. But I'd like to go back to what Scott was just saying about getting our insurance ahead of the re, the posting of the FEMA floodplain. I wonder if we should send out a press release on that to, to, you know, I may have heard it in the original coverage, but the Swiss cheese, I call a brain, let it pass without registering. So, I wonder if we need to make an extra effort to get the word out on that.
I think Scott just said that he is making the extra effort, and he's working on that.
And I, I think that the timing, if we send it out now, a press release is going to be lost. I think we need to send it out next June, July, a little closer to the dates because then you're likely to take further action.
Thank you.
Mr. Litz, did you have a comment?
I just wanted to comment, the auditor's office does have some of the old ditch bond records down there and drawings, they're hand drawings of a lot of these old districts, and I could poke around down there and see what I could find out for you.
Okay. Maybe for emergency management and planning, so. Any other comments on that subject? I have a, Commissioner Barth, you have a comment?
It's on my liaison.
Liaison, of course. Yep, go ahead.
I had it out, we had it in our homeless advisory board yesterday. The city did a presentation on their efforts in affordable housing, and in the small brochure that came out with it, they identify the numerous projects that they've put in. For example, owner units modified for accessibility, 11 projects for $37,000. New households assisted in 2014 for Heartland House, there were 37 of them. Rental rehabilitation projects. In any case, under the mayor, the spending on affordable housing has increased since he took over. I don't know that that's all city money, but I know that it's efforts that I welcome and are helping keeping people in their homes, which is one of the priorities for the homeless advisory board now. Preventing people from becoming homeless, keeping them in their homes is, and the city's doing, is helping.
And I have one liaison report, and that was that I met with the senior project director for the forwards Sioux Falls and had an interview this past week. And amongst many questions at the end, we kind of talked about what their goal is, and their goal is $17 million this year. We talked about what the county has contributed over the last five years and told them we had not decided for sure on that number. I think we'll be discussing that again in September when we do our... I think we'll be discussing that again in September when we do our final budget review. We did talk about where we had pledged before, I think $500 a year, that we could change our pledges midstream in that five years if we wanted to start out with more, if we had more. And then it came the next year and we couldn't actually make that. So that was some conversation about, about maybe some flexibility, realizing the budget constraints that Minnehaw County has. So that will be a conversation for the future. Are there any other liaison reports? Is there any new business? Is there any old business? Firm motion to adjourn the executive session for personnel and possible, potential litigation? All those in favor? A second, motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.